It's now six fourteen. Welcome to the Series Planning Commission meeting. I apologize for the delay. Today is Monday, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. The meeting will be held in person and also on Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing planning@ci.series.ca.us before four o'clock P. M. The date of the meeting. Include the agenda, item number, or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the Planning Commission and kept on file as part of the official record of the Planning Commission meeting. Can we please? Can you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Condit.
Here.
Commissioner Del Nero. Commissioner Johnson is absent this evening. Commissioner Katchel and Chairperson Otero.
Here. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the Commission that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none. Citizen communications to the Commission on matters not included on the agenda. While the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in Planning Commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and not posted on the not posted on the post agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the post agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Citizens are entitled to address the Planning Commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Is there anyone who would like to speak on any matter not included on the agenda? If so, please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Dave Prada Series. I see the issues you're having. I was really disappointed the last meeting. I was out of town and on Zoom. And for thirty-five minutes, all you had on the screen was the subject, subject. And I could not see who was doing any talking at all in the thing. After thirty-five minutes, finally, the chamber came on. There was nothing other on the subject showed up on there for thirty-five minutes on what you were talking about. And not only that, because Mr. Condit was out of town on Zoom. Zoom. When he spoke, the only thing to see in his name was blazing across the screen and no video of him. And the way we're looking at you're still having problems with Zoom. Zoom. Hopefully, you can get that straightened out.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is required, that particular item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately. Is there anyone on the Commission who would like a consent item pulled for further discussion? None? Is there anyone in the public that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion? Anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
A motion to approve.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Condit.
Yes.
Commissioner Katchel.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Yes.
And Chairperson Otero. Yes. Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Moving on to public hearings. Item number four, annual review of the five-year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program. Determination of whether the individual projects are consistent with the general plan maps, policies, and principles, and recommendation to the City Council regarding the consistency with the City of Series two thousand and thirty-five General Plan. Sequo status per section sixty-five, one oh three, parent C does not qualify as a project. Required action, adopt PC Resolution twenty-four dash nineteen. Our city engineer, Michael Beltran, will present the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mike Beltran, city engineer. So in front of you for this public hearing is the annual adoption of the five-year Capital Improvement Program. The Capital Improvement Program is generally a list of projects that have been selected really throughout the years as we move through on projects that we could do within the next five years. Some of the projects you'll see on the list are very big projects, you know, in the millions of dollar range. Some of them are smaller road projects, water projects, sewer projects, facility projects. So what is a capital improvement program? It's really, it's a program where department heads, through input of the City Council members, citizens, we look at all of everything that is submitted to the Engineering Department, and we put a five-year Capital Improvement Plan together. This five-year plan has actually, will come to the Planning Commission every single year and is generally adopted into the budget with the budget resolution. So benefits of the Capital Improvement Program. It implements generally the city's general plan. Now, note that the general plan is a wide-ranging document. It's not, you're not going to find a specific project generally within the general plan. It talks about our circulation plan, and, you know, it talks about maintenance to that circulation plan. It talks about facilities, talks about a whole host of things. And the question is, is are the projects that we're doing consistent with the general plan? So as we move into looking at consistency, I've listed quite a few examples of goals within the general plan that the Capital Improvement Program actually does conform with. So as we, as we look at all of these, we make sure that, you know, projects that we're doing do conform. We want to make sure that we are carrying out the city's general plan. And as we come to you, we look for the Planning Commission to recommend approval to the council for conformance to the general plan with the Capital Improvement Program. One thing you're going to note is the Capital Improvement Program is from essentially fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-eight right now. That is because the fiscal year twenty-three books are being closed. And so we haven't, we haven't done everything to get to the twenty-four book. So as we catch up with this, you will, you will see next in probably May is when I'll come again with the next year, five-year CIP that will actually be integrated into the city budget and go with the budget resolution. So that is, that is why if you're wondering why you're going to see twenty-three to twenty-eight, why you are actually seeing twenty-three to twenty-eight. The numbers that are associated in there are in draft form right now. They will be in final form once we go to the council on November twelfth. But those numbers are in draft form at this time. I would say, for the most part, they're generally accurate. But there could be some adjustments as we, as we go through the numbers and fine-tune everything in the final five-year CIP. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Does the Commission have any questions or comments on this item?
No, just a general comment that I'm always amazed looking at how many things a city's involved in doing that maybe we don't notice on a day-to-day basis just living here. You guys keep busy, that's for sure.
So the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? If so, please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
John Warren, City of Series. When I looked through the staff report prior to the meeting, I didn't see a specific list of any projects. And I think that's what you're referring to. There's not a list of certain specific projects that might be in consideration or going to be acted on in the next coming year or two.
So, so there should have been in the agenda packet an entire list of projects. The whole entire Capital Improvement Program should have been in there.
When I looked at the online stuff, I didn't see that. I may have missed it. But my, my question that I was looking for would have been the wastewater treatment plant. Where is that in the list of things to do?
So the wastewater treatment plant is actually pushed, pushed out quite a bit. And it comes in different funds within, within the Capital Improvement Program. So there's public facility fees. There are the sewer fund that it comes out of. The, it comes out of both the mainline fund and the connection fund. Right now, we have it slated out in like the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year, you know, pending design and, and obviously, everything else that goes with that. We'll, we'll see if that schedule sticks. We would hope that it will, but in design of a project of this magnitude, you know, it could slip. There, that's, that's one thing that happens.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. I'll bring it back to the Commission for any additional questions or comments.
Yeah, I just had a few questions for Mr. Beltran. So you, this is our first public hearing on this item, correct?
Yes, this is the first public hearing.
Okay. And what is the timeline for taking this back to the City Council? I know you stated you're planning on presenting this to them on eleven, twelve, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. My, my recommendation would be to halt this. We have two planning commissioners, two new planning commissioners coming on board pretty soon and possibly a new City Council. So I would like to see possibly another public hearing to get this information more out to the public. A lot of projects in the, in the document you prepared. But just with the potential changes to this Commission and possibly to the City Council, I think it would be smart to halt it for now. But thank you for preparing it.
So I just have a question. I apologize if I missed this. With the order of projects, like under each category, so you have general fund, the American Rescue Act, and so on, is there a certain order that you begin the projects? Or is it just, this is just general under each?
So these are the projects that we have generally listed under each fund within the city. Right now is, the City Council really depends on engineering to prioritize projects. But it is, and you'll hear me say this at their public hearing, it is the City Council's prerogative really to prioritize a project that they deem, that they deem fit. So when it comes down to prioritization, they really, the City Council has the authority to obviously approve the projects, approve the funding, and approve the priority in which those projects should happen.
And then I actually was wondering too how much the public was involved with this. I thought maybe over time, if, I don't know if you gather complaints or things like that, and that's how you generate some of these projects. But also as professionals in the city, I know you also recognize the projects that need to be completed. But is there any way that we can allow the public to, for them to be more notified of something like this where they can give comment and be present?
We generally do one public hearing. That's, that's, well, two public hearings, one for the Planning Commission and then one during the budget. I will say that generally during the budget, it's not a hot-ticket item unless, because it's not a standalone public hearing. So this will actually be two public hearings on just this Capital Improvement Program, which will be different in years going forward. It'll generally be one public hearing to the Planning Commission, and then it'll go in with the budget resolution in the public hearing that's, that's along with the budget. As far as, you know, things that need to be done within the city, we do depend on the citizens. We depend on you all. We depend on the council to, to see where there, where there are problems. I, I'll be honest, we don't drive every road in the city every single day. So we, we're not going to see all of those things. We have a general pavement condition index report of every street within the city. We, we plan a lot off of that. The big thing is, is that is, that's only one metric that we look at when we're looking at roads. You know, it can have a high PCI, but maybe it still needs to be maintained. You know, if it's got a low PCI, how low is it? Can it be done with a grind and overlay? Can it be done with, or does it need to be fully reconstructed? So those are the types of things we run through. Anytime somebody comes to us with a potential project, we, we do look at it. And then that discussion will happen between generally the department heads and, you know, public works. If, you know, so we, we look at all of those types of things. I would like to, the downtown revitalization project was a prime example of that. You know, where, you know, we, we looked at it, the council, you know, I heard them from, from the diocese that that's, that's a project that they wanted and asked if they wanted me to bring that back. And so I did. So those types of things, you know, are, in engineering, our door is always open. My phone's always on. If there are things that need, that we see need to be done, then by all means, we take those and we take them seriously. And they may not, they may not get done right then and there. We have limited funding, you know, we, in Mezorl, we get about two point four million dollars per year. So two point four million dollars, while it seems like a lot of money, is not when it comes to road construction projects and sidewalk projects and things of that sort. So we do have to prioritize those things as we, as we move through the CIP. That's not to say that they can't be added to the CIP, though. This is a, this is a document that comes to the council and the Planning Commission every single year. And as many projects as we need to add, we can add to that so that we can get them at least on a list to know that at some point in time, they are going to get done and looked at. So.
At any time, does, sorry, one more question. At any time, does this document here get amended throughout the year? Is this pretty much set or?
So it can get amended at any time that the council would like to add a CIP project. And I think, again, a prime example of that was the downtown revitalization project. There hadn't been, that was not in the CIP. And so I brought it back, and in the budget resolution, it specifically says that it's adding it to the Capital Improvement Program. And then it appropriates money and so on and so forth. But yes, it can be, it's essentially a living document. It can be amended, you know, and added to. Now, we don't bring the entire document back every time. We add it to the document. And then when it comes up for this hearing again, which will be, we'll take it to the Planning Commission either late April or, or early May generally, so that we can have time to get it included into the budget document when we, when we come up this next year.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or?
So I got one more. So we're talking a revision in May, let's say, of all of this?
Yes, so is what we do through the budget process is, as we move through the budget process, which we start in, you know, January, February, there'll be a certain timeline for department heads. A lot of that mainly is, is our public works department. If they see maybe water or sewer lines that need to be redone, we, we take those. We, we get costs for them, estimated costs for, for the projects. And then, and then we get, get them added into the document, and then we come back to you in May. So, so yeah, it will generally be revised in some way every single year. You know, in projects that are completed, that we file notice of completions on, close the project out, those projects will actually come off the list. So the one thing we don't want to do is leave a bunch of projects with, you know, five or ten or twenty thousand dollars in them. It, it makes it messy, and we'd, we'd like to keep it clean.
Oh, I only said that because I know Mr. Condit here had a question about delaying it for a little bit, which is probably a valid question, but you're going to have a revision anyway. I don't know if that helps you change your mind or you're still on the same thing.
I, I, no, yeah, definitely. I, I think the fact we're going to have two possibly new planning commissioners and a new City Council when he does possibly, when he does bring it back to the City Council, I just think the delay makes sense to me. And that's my view on it.
So I'd like to, I'd like to put in one tidbit of information there. We also have what they call an AB sixteen hundred report, which is a developer impact fee report that is going to be coming due in, I, I think it's actually slated for the second meeting in November right now. That is a yearly report that has to be filed, I believe it's by section six-six-zero-zero-one, that we need to file every single year. So that way, it allocates our development impact fees that we collect from developers when they, when they build in the city. And in order for that to hap, in order for that to happen, you actually have to have a CIP plan that is approved. You know, so that's, that's what I would, the way that I would look at it is that if we can't get that approved, then there's no way that I can actually do something that's required by statute by the end of the year, like we're supposed to.
I just want to jump in and add that some of these items, if you'll notice, like the well fourteen replacement, the well twenty-three replacement, they're projected for years out. To Michael's point, we just need to get them on a list to be consistent with this AB sixteen hundred. That doesn't mean that this council is now looking at approving a well fourteen project today. So whether it's this council, the next council, this commission, or the next commission, the professionals that we rely on, your public works director has said, by twenty-five, twenty-six, we need to start looking at replacing well fourteen. By year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we need to start replacing well twenty-three. It's putting it on a list because they're monitoring all of these city infrastructure needs. They're monitoring the CIP, the road, road conditions. They need to get it on this list so that we appropriately can have this list to be in compliance with AB sixteen. They're not saying that's the project that's going to happen today. It's like making your, your, a really long grocery list. It's on the list, but that doesn't mean you're shopping for it today. It just gets it so that we have acknowledged that we're doing this, we're in compliance with AB sixteen hundred. So whether it's a new or existing council or new or existing planning commission, you're not dictating that this is what's getting done now. We're just saying that we have this list, that we acknowledge all these things that we need to accomplish, and we're in compliance with AB sixteen hundred.
And I think it's important to note that the, you know, once, and I understand your point, Commissioner, when, when a new council comes in, obviously, we can have council members that change every couple of years. And if their priorities change, they can, they can change this list. That's, that is the, you know, that, that is the right of that council to do what they choose with that list. And so if it needed to come back sooner, it can come back sooner, or it can come in the, in the update. And as we walk through the budget, which, you know, we walk through with generally, you know, council members and, you know, through every single meeting and that type of stuff, we can still, we can still alter this list as we, as we move through that, so.
I appreciate the clarification. I did have another question for you, Mr. Beltran. So I noticed two, for the Whitmore Park gazebo, I see ARPA five hundred thousand on page nine. And then on page sixteen, I see Whitmore Park gazebo upgrades for seventy-five thousand. Can you clarify the difference on those?
Sure. So Commissioner, both of those, those are just different funds. They are actually in the, so one's in the ARPA fund, one's in the Building Facilities Fund. The Building Facilities Fund is actually slated not to be touched at all when it comes down to it. There is grant that has to be appropriated to it. It's about two hundred and eight thousand dollars of a state-funded grant that needs to be appropriated to it. Those funds need to be spent by December thirty-first. So generally, your, your two funds will be the state grant and the ARPA funding for the Whitmore gazebo.
And as far as the Planning Commissioner's authority on this document, do we have the power to add to eliminate projects? What, what does that look like? Because I know you stated the council can do that. But if we approve this tonight, our next opportunity won't be until April to?
The, the Commission can actually suggest projects. Obviously, this is just a recommendation for approval to the City Council. So they, as commissioners, yes, you can suggest projects just like anybody from the, from the audience could. You guys can suggest them, and the City Council can add and delete them as, as they see fit. So, so the answer, yes, you can, you can add projects if you'd like, or if you'd recommend that some be deleted, then we just take that recommendation to the City Council, and then they are the ones that have the ultimate authority. The Commission's real thing is that it conforms with the general plan. That's really the biggest, that's the, the Planning Commission's biggest role in recommending approval to the City Council.
Well, then I guess I would like my recommendation noted, at least as far as the Whitmore Park gazebo goes. I read in your bullet points that fiscal responsibility is, is on that list you stated, and also preserving our local history. So I, I know that money's too late to be taken away, most likely, but that, that would be my recommendation, at least to be noted, that we need better fiscal responsibility projects and also preserving our local history here in our city. But again, I just, I can't support this tonight. With two new planning commissioners coming on board and potential changes, I will have to withhold my support. But I appreciate you putting it together. I think there's a lot of great projects in here, but those are my comments tonight.
So for me, what it sounds like is we have a state statute to meet, or the city has a state statute to meet to file the document you were talking about. And this, this document here can be amended basically at any time by the City Council or the new planning commissioners if needed.
I don't know that it could be amended by the Planning Commissioners. It would be, it would actually be amended by the City Council.
City Council, okay.
Yeah, suggestions are always, you guys can always suggest, just like anybody, like I said. My, my phone's on all the time. So anybody that wants to suggest I come out and look at a road I have, and/or sidewalks or what have you within the city, that's, that's always, always a possibility.
Anything else? Does anyone want to make a motion to approve it?
Sure, I'll give it a try. I hear what everybody's saying, and we've got interesting situation going on in the city right now, obviously, that we're all aware of. When this gets to the council on the twelfth, it may be the exact same council or maybe a lame duck council. We don't know. I don't know when they take office, if there's changes. We don't know if there will be changes. I'm not taking any sides here. I'm just trying to put the things in perspective from my point of view. And one of these items has been a campaign issue. Valid campaign issue, I think, too. But with that said, I think for me, I'm going to recommend it to the City Council that the draft Capital Improvement Plan is consistent with the City of Series two thousand and twenty-five, thirty-five. Excuse me, I don't have my glasses on. I don't know why I don't have my glasses on. General plan and related master plans, that's my motion. And I say it, as Leah said, this has to do with compliance with, and you said it as well, with the, with the general plan policies and goals more than. with the general plan policies and goals uh more than any specific project. So we're not approving any projects right here. We're just, I, I think the analogy to a shopping list was pretty appropriate. It basically is the city's shopping list and you can always change that when you're at the store for that matter, until you check out, so. Um, with that, that was my motion, was in all that somewhere, so.
But to approve, we can't change any of these items tonight, correct?
We could recommend modification to the plan. Technically, we don't approve anything because it's up to the council.
Most of these projects have already been approved, so a recommendation wouldn't, couldn't change it, correct?
Correct. I mean, a, a recommendation, so if you guys had a motion that essentially was a motion that's saying that the projects were consistent with the general plan, but we would like the council to consider deleting such-and-such project or adding such-and-such project, then, then we, we, we would put that into our staff report that the planning commission has recommended, they've approved it, that it is consistent with the general plan and that they have either recommended to add or delete such-and-such project.
But Commissioner, to your point, we'll just use the gazebo. That, that money has been approved and allocated by council. It has to be on the CIP because the money is technically carrying over into the next fiscal year. Yes, you wouldn't be able to undo that approval, but if something that's later into the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, those would be items that you could suggest to amend or remove.
I'll second your, your recommendation. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katzel?
Aye.
Presser Otero?
Aye.
Commissioner Condit?
Nay.
And Commissioner Delaro?
Aye.
Motion passes three, one with one absent.
Moving on to new business, none. Public meetings, none. Unfinished business, none. Matters initiated by planning commission and staff, none. Does the commission or anyone have any reports, city staff?
Comment and a question. Comment is, thank you for the excellent job you did and, and you did too, Leah. It's tough situation and I think you both handled it very professionally and was very well-prepared as well. Your report was very well-done. I'm quite impressed with it. And secondly, uh, where's the housing element status these days?
So we received a second comment letter. We were not happy about it. Our consultant, we had a meeting with HCD to show them our draft. They seemed to like what we're showing them. We got extra information provided by public works, I meant engineering. They seem to unofficially say that they like our changes, so we're hoping to, we're having a meeting on Thursday again and hopefully we'll resubmit. So.
Congratulations. I've been to those meetings as a staff person at HCD and they're no fun.
Been difficult and it's been interesting. I've been on two League of California city calls. And we're not alone.
Yeah.
Um, the consultant that is working with us just got their second city approved, so hopefully we'll be their third city. That is promising, but we're not alone in this circle of endless HCD.
Good, because it's easy to just, and I'm one of them, to kind of just, okay, it's the housing element, nobody cares, except there's things now in law that if you don't have a housing element, as you know, you can be in big trouble when it comes to approving or not approving projects because it just allows developers to just bypass more or less uh, the planning process and don't wanna be in that situation. So I was just curious.
We're close. It's hoping for the end of the year, but maybe early.
That's okay. Somebody else has problem by that. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to report?
Uh, I did. Um, Leah is our city attorney on, online. Can we hear him and have dialogue with him?
Josh, just.
Yeah, I'm here, Commissioner Condit, if you can hear me.
Hey, Josh, I, I had a question I wanted to bring up. Um, can you explain the rules on our elected officials having influence with the planning commission? I would like some clarification on this.
Elected officials having influence on commissioners, uh, oh gosh, it, it depends, but, um, we might, we might need, wanna have a discussion off, offline, Commissioner, if there's a specific.
Why would we try to have it in public, to be honest with you, but uh, my, first, this example is the mayor coming and has sending a representative to speak as the mayor on a agenda item to all five planning commissioners. I would like clarification on the Brown Act and our relationship as planning commissioners with our elected officials. So if you need.
Um, it, it's it's acceptable to come to a public meeting and express opinions on the agenda, whether, whether they're part of the legislative body or not. Uh, you want, wait, for Brown Act, once you're in a public meeting, then all the, all that deliberation is happening out in the open. Um, but depend, depending on the decision before the planning commission, sometimes there are procedural requirements that the planning commission has to render a recommendation to the, to the council, but just ba- based on the example of someone speaking on behalf of mayor or another city council member at a planning commission meeting, I, I see no, no violation there.
Okay, I, I think this is something we should look into. It's been a continued problem. Um, and when I first got appointed to the planning commission, I had the city manager and our uh community development director at the time state that we could not discuss planning commission business with our city council. So I think at a future meeting, I would like some sort of report maybe or um some guidelines that obviously are two new planning commissioners coming on board to uh kind of be aware of, so. Um, that.
I would, I, um, outside of an open meeting, I, I certainly would have more concerns when there's a majority of a body speaking outside of an open meeting, but um we're ha- ha- happy to put together some notes for you.
Prefer, I appreciate it.
Clarity on the issue. You would like to know as a citizen of Series, if, if the elected official comes and speak as a citizen of Series versus in their elected capacity, elected.
That is correct. There's a clear difference, yes. Using your, your elected position to try to influence an independent board, that is, there's a clear difference, yes.
The next regular, regularly scheduled planning commission meeting will be held on Monday, November fourth, twenty-twenty-four.